Be heard, is that correct?
Yes ma'am. We do have a separate recording that is recording the audio.
Okay.
In full, so if we need to re-upload, it will all be with the audio. And our audio will be able to be heard.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm just getting informed that we are back up on YouTube with audio.
Great, okay, thank you.
Apologies for inconvenience, thank you.
Thank you for that information, okay? Okay, Betsy?
Thank you Miguel, thank you.
And Betsy, were you done with your presentation? Because there's one thing that I wanted to bring up in this context. I got a call from Patsy Stallworth from the Desert Food Spoon Hub the other day, last week, and they have been distributing, they had gotten a grant from the USDA, a couple of grants, I think, from the USDA through Segovias to provide the boxes to people at their homes, that they were delivering food boxes to folks. I think about 140 or 150 folks within Central El Paso, and they were just notified that that funding is no longer available to them. I guess some type of rule was created where there was additional funding provided for food provision from the USDA, but it's only available for, I guess, it's only available for distribution that hasn't occurred yet. And so there are about, you know, 140 or 150 people in Central El Paso who are homebound and who are receiving these food boxes who depended on these these food boxes, and they're no longer getting them. And so I was wondering if we could look into, you know, how much it would be, and if we can use some of our CARES Act funding to help supplement that, because that's really affecting some of these families that were really dependent upon that delivery of food.
And Commissioner, if we can look into that, I understood that there was going to be a different provider possibly, but I don't have all the details, I just heard about it on Friday afternoon. So if you can give us a chance to look into it, and we can get an idea of how much it would cost, and bring that back to the court.
Sure, and if anything you need from me or my staff, let me know. Information, I mean, I'm sure you can get in contact with Desert Food, Desert Spoon yourself, but whatever you need from me, let me know.
Yes sir, thank you. And Judge, if there's any other updates from the court, we would love to have those now.
Betsy has pretty much covered the areas, and, you know, the flu, and, you know, just thanking them, and also just a warning of how we've got this new spike, and how we need to address that. The economy, obviously, everybody, we have commented today. It sort of represents a lot of businesses feeling that we need to be a little bit more assertive. I feel that we are doing everything possible, and, you know, the health side sometimes doesn't see it from the economic side, and the business doesn't see it from the public health side, and it's going to be up to us to keep that balance going, that we do both, that we are very conscientious public health, but also we understand the impact it has on our economy. But I've said over and over, it's not the opening of the economy, it's how we open the economy. And we do need to take steps forward. When we talk about bars, we should have more bars, well, they've pretty much have shot themselves in the foot when they have Facebook pictures of everybody with each other, and, you know, socializing more than they should, no masks. And so, as the Governor said, don't blame the order, blame the, you know, the way they're conducting, and also enforcement. We're getting better at enforcement, I think, once we get better at enforcement, we'll feel more comfortable as well. Because the idea of just opening, and hopefully everything goes well, that's too risky. We've seen what can happen when we do that. So we'll keep working on that balance, and trying to see if we could open the economy in a way that's safe. Obviously, we're taking a big lead in how we do things, so we're taking our time, we're addressing every situation, the courts are going to be opening for jury next month. And, you know, and we're doing it in the right way, and I think we're going to be a great example that if you do it properly, the chances of being, you know, a problem instead of the solution is going to be a lot greater, so. Thank you, Betsy.
Any other updates? If not, that concludes this item. Oh, Commissioner Stoudt?
Yeah, I have a quick update, if nobody else does. I just wanted to let you all know that one thing that we're going to be working on is an issue at the intersection of homelessness and immigration. Last week, my office learned that ICE had released an individual suspected of having COVID-19 to Annunciation House. Typically, ICE has told us that they are not releasing folks that are positive, but somehow this happened, and so it turns out that the individual did have COVID, and accordingly, Annunciation House had to stop accepting new intakes until at least the beginning of October, during which time they put their staff and folks residing there who had been exposed to the positive individual in quarantine. So the homeless emergency shelters have had a great system of screening and quarantining through the Delta Site, and we're going to meet with them this week to get some insight and expertise on how we can improve the system for admissions to Annunciation House when future ICE detainees are released. The releases tend to be pretty slow lately, and it's not a huge volume, but anytime you're talking about people in a congregate setting being released into the community, the extra work that we can do to provide our existing systems to accommodate the various wrinkles, I think is definitely going to be worth it. As for the Delta Site itself, as we move to the fall and cooler weather, they are preparing for an increase in intakes, as is normal during colder months here. In general, more of their intake includes families that then has been the case during the pandemic. The city is evaluating the proposals submitted for ongoing welcome center operation, and they should be announcing the results soon. As we know, the city got a lot more CARES Act funding than we did, and one thing they are doing that will help people is, you know, putting $500,000 into Community Foundation's Kid Shift Done Program, which employs people who have been laid off because of the pandemic and positions where extra help is needed. So in that case, money will fund folks to provide more manpower at the food banks. Just wanted to let you all know about that, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Jessica?
There will be no action for item number 11. Item number 12, from purchasing, authorize a single source award of VMAX and VoteSafe software maintenance and support for Information Technology Department to VoteTech Corporation in the amount of $107,103.52. Funding is available in General Fund ITD Maintenance Repair Software. I'd also like to read in item number 21, which corresponds to this item. Item 21 from Information Technology, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the software license maintenance agreement between the County of El Paso and VoteTech Corporation for VMAX and VoteSafe support. Funding will be available upon FY 2021 budget allocation in General Fund ITD Maintenance Repair Software for the amount of $107,103.52. Contract number 20200795.
Deborah, if you're there, dial star six.
Chris, do you want to?
I can get started, thank you Judge. Chris Stath is your Chief Information Officer. Yeah, as we're trying to bring Deborah in, I'll let you know that the ITD portion of this is a fairly routine software maintenance and support item. We do this annually for the Elections Department and Ms. Weiss. This is non-controversial, they are supported and hosted online. IT pretty much just manages the contract in this case, and we recommend approval. And I believe for the purchasing item, I'm not an expert in that, but I believe this is either a single source or a sole source assignment that traditionally Ms. Carrero does on these types of agreements, and I believe she would recommend approval as well.
Thank you, move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoudt?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you Judge.
Item number 13, authorize a sole source award of ILEADS, RMS, and BI Direct Maintenance and Support Renewals for Information Technology Department to Integra Corporation, doing business as Hexagon Safety and Infrastructure in the amount of $174,639.22. Funding is available in General Fund ITD Maintenance Repair Software.
I'm trying to reach Deborah on her phone, one second. Hi Deborah, this is Miguel, you're on now.
Oh wonderful, wonderful. Greetings Commissioners.
We're on item 13.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes ma'am, I just wanted you to know we're on item number 13 for ILEADS and BI Direct Maintenance and Support Renewals.
Yes ma'am, I have been following along, I have just been unable to access the system. Thanks to everyone for allowing me to call in, having a little bit of internet trouble today. Before you, you have a sole source request for approval of the ILEADS, RMS, and BI Direct. Please be aware that this is proprietary software, there is no other option, and we're requesting favorable approval for this item.
Motion to approve? Second.
Commissioner Betis?
He has left the meeting.
Commissioner Betis is absent, Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoudt?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 15, award bid 20-034, bearing seat replacement on Bent Number 11 Torneo Guadalupe International Bridge for the County of El Paso to Haas Contracting Company, Inc. of Albuquerque, New Mexico, in the amount of $195,000. Purchasing approved on September 17, 2020. Funding is available in CPT-GPOE 12 Construction.
Greetings Commissioners Court, Judge Samaniego. Deborah Carrero-Troll, County Purchasing Agent. I'm presenting to you the bid for the project, as stated, and please be aware that in this event, we did receive only one bid. We weren't sure we were going to receive many bids at all because there is some specialty tasks associated with this. We queried vendors, and you have that query attached, as well as we requested that the Public Works Department fill out the single bid response. This is to do two things, it's to identify why there might have only been one bid, and to verify that the price being offered is within expectations. And in this case, the price offered in the single bid is within 2% of the designer engineer's opinion. In the query, we went back to ask why vendors may not have bid on this. Much of it came back to the fact that vendors either did not have the equipment to perform this, and local vendors didn't perform this specific type of service. And so we're requesting approval of the single bid for this project.
Move to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Betis is absent, Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoudt?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 16, pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section 262.0248-1-3, approve and authorize the use of an exemption to purchasing procedures to allow a contract with the Family Independence Initiative, Inc. in the amount of $225,000 for emergency financial assistance to county residents living outside El Paso city limits. Funding is available in SG COVID-19 operating expenses. Contract number 20200689.
Deborah Carrero-Troll, County Purchasing Agent. For this item, we're requesting use of the emergency exemption as allowed in 262, which is the purchasing act. This is for the contract with the Family Independence Initiative, and I believe a contract is coming at a later date to be signed and is being negotiated at this time. This will provide financial assistance to the families that are struggling with the economic downturn, and I believe the court has already been updated on the details of this project. If you approve this, you are approving the short-term contract that will occur between now and December the 31st.
Betsy?
This is the program that Joel has presented, Joel and Irene have presented to Commissioners Court, where we are partnering with Hunt Family Foundation. This will, our funding using the CARES Act funding will be used from now until the end of the year. Then going forward, we will use a portion of our general assistance, community service support, and then Hunt Family Foundation will match our support over several years going forward.
Move to approve?
Was there a second?
Commissioner Leon?
And is Commissioner Betis back off?
Yes.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoudt?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 17, pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section 262.0248-4, approve and authorize the use of an exemption to purchasing procedures to allow a contract with the Family Independence Initiative, Inc. in the amount of $100,000 for emergency financial assistance to county residents living outside El Paso city limits. Funding is available in General Fund, General Assist, Community Services Support, contract number 20200816.
Deborah Carrero-Troll, County Purchasing Agent. This item is an approval of the longer-term contract mentioned by Betsy in the prior items. We're requesting approval under your exemption authority, which is Part IV of the Exemption Code 024. If you approve and allow us to use this, you will have a contract from January the 1st of 2021, December the 31st, with options to renew at the court's convenience.
And this is the portion using General Fund Community Support Services dollars.
Judge and Commissioners?
Joel, do you have any comments?
Yeah, go ahead Joel.
Sure, if there's any specific questions at all, I'm here to answer those. This initiative is an opportunity to leverage our existing funds that we're already using for general assistance with the community as a match with the Hunt Foundation for several years, in which they will help administer cash assistance to residents that could still supplement rental assistance or public assistance that they need, and also provide us with the ability to track this in the longer term, to track the outcomes in the longer term, which is something we haven't been able to do before. So we're excited about this opportunity. We presented the bigger picture before to the court as well, but this is just solidifying the contract.
It also includes social capital, not just cash assistance to the participants, that we think will bring it to a new level.
Irene, any comments from?
I'm not sure Irene's on the line, Judge.
Yes, I did jump on, thank you. Thank you Joel, Joel pretty much covered it all, Judge Commissioners. The contracts are being, they're in the final stages of approval by the other party, and we'll be putting those two contracts on for your next meeting next week. So you're going to be seeing the terms and conditions of these contracts next week.
Thank you. Move to approve?
Irene, I just have a quick question.
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner.
Irene, does this also include what we've been doing for years and years, the part of your area that's rapid rehousing?
No, this is a different concept to provide cash assistance to families in need. So it's separate from the rental assistance we provide, but we will be analyzing whether folks that need rental assistance also need this type of cash assistance, but it's separate from that, sir.
And it will all be administered out of your office?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Was there a second to that?
No, sir.
I'll go ahead and say that.
Debbie? Okay, I make the motion, Commissioner Leon, second.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoudt?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 23, Budget and Finance. Approve and authorize the county judge to accept the Office of the Governor Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program grant award in the amount of $961,436.86 from April 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2021. No county match required. Contract number 20200850.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. For the record, Letitia Vizcaino with Grants Administration. As mentioned, the El Paso County was awarded this grant from the Governor's Office in the amount of $961,436.86. Of the total award, $225,763 were allocated to four of the local sub-residential municipalities, as previously approved by the County Commissioners Court, to include Horizon, Planelisario, Clint, and Vinton. The remaining amount of $735,638 will be strictly for El Paso County expenses. Eligible costs for this funding includes overtime for law enforcement personnel, to include peace officers, medical examiner, jail staff, and other essential staff, PPE, supplies, temporary staff, and medical care for inmates. As such, the anticipated grant budget includes temporary personnel for all constable precincts and overtime for each precinct. Grants Administration has met with HR to guide us through the policy the precincts will have to follow when working overtime and when hiring the temporary physician. We have also met with each of the precincts to discuss the request and what will be provided through this spending for each precinct. Judge and Commissioners, in addition to approving the acceptance of this award, we would also like to ask you today for a blanket approval for overtime claimed by each constable precinct under this grant from October 4th, 2020 through the end of the grant period. October 4th is the next pay period for all county, and all overtime claimant constable precincts will also be proportionate to the number of deputies for each precinct. With this, I thank you for your time and your considerate acceptance of the grant award. We are open for any questions at this moment.
Thank you. Commissioners? Motion to approve? Second.
Sorry, Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoudt?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
This now brings us to item number 24, Executive Session. Commissioners Court will recess into executive session to discuss items 24A through 24D, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.087. Commissioners Court will recommence to take official action.
Okay, stand by everyone.
Hi, this is County Judge Samaniego. The 2020 census count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food, and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Betis for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner Carl Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stoudt. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 censuses. Together and fearless we come.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Road and Bridge Fabians Warehouse, located at 1331 North Fabians Street in Fabians, Texas, 79838. The Road and Bridge Canodilla Warehouse, located at 1- The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse, located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse, located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Hi, this is County Judge Samaniego. The 2020 Census Count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Bettes for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner called L. Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 census. Together and fearless, we count.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Road and Bridge Fabin's Warehouse, located at 1331 North Fabin Street in Fabin's, Texas, 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse, located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse, located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epccounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html To make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice-of-the-peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed.
To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
...
Hi, this is County Judge Salmaniego. The 2020 census count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Bettes for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This Commissioner called L. Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 censuses. Together and fearless, we count.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Road and Bridge Fabinz Warehouse, located at 1331 North Fabinz Street in Fabinz, Texas, 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse, located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse, located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Go ahead, Jessica.
Commissioner's Court has reconvened into a regular session.
No, it's not being seen at all.
Okay, thank you. Item number 25 from regular session postponed September 21st, 2020. Discuss and take appropriate action on the litigation South Murfreesboro, Flerco, Spurin versus El Paso County, Texas et al. Clause number EP19CB00165FM, county attorney case number 016419LD. We request for this item as well as the corresponding item from executive session. Item 24B be postponed for one week.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Commissioner Bette?
Aye.
Commissioner Laon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 26 postponed September 21st, 2020. Discuss and take appropriate action on the litigation South Rosario Felix Roberto Gallegos, deceased versus El Paso County, Texas et al. Clause number 319CB00277KC, county attorney, case number 022319LD. We request for this item as well as its corresponding item in executive, item 24CB postponed one week.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Bette?
Aye.
Commissioner Laon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 27, approve and authorize the county judge to sign a Chapter 381 Economic Development Agreement with Project Holding, contract number 20200511. For this item, we request no action. And this completes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
Thank you very much, Jessica, and before I just want to... I wish I'd done it earlier, but I wanted to thank Miguel and Alexis for the amazing work that they did on getting us ready for the state of the county, and I say "we" because it's not about me, obviously, it's about our court and it's about all our department heads. Also want to thank everybody that turned in their information. We hope that we do justice for, you know, everything that was turned in. A pretty difficult task. You know, the other state of the county, the state of Congress was 15 minutes, I believe, and the city did about 15 minutes, but true to us, you know, we did a production. We recognized our employees, our department heads, and all the incredible, you know, things that we're doing here at Commissioner's Court. So Alexis and Miguel, you know, they worked over the weekend to continue this production. So my, you know, thank you both, amazing what you did, and a lot of patience with me, Nicole and Erica. Also thank you for everything that you did to get this going. So stay tuned, it'll be Wednesday at 9 o'clock, and like I said, I hope we do justice to all the hard work from all the department heads and the commissioners and everything you do at your precinct. So thank you, Miguel, thank you, Alexis. And that concludes, and meeting adjourned, hope you have a really good week, and very productive, and safe. Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting at 5:10 PM.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
Thank you.